He called. Hold on, hold on, hold on.
I think that's me. Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Better? And then turn my volume down here, okay?
All right, sounds good. All right, at seven oh two, I'll call.
At seven oh two, I'll call the village board meeting for Monday, July thirteenth to order. Get a little feedback. And ask Penny to call the roll, please.
Trustee Guyer.
Here.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Lee. Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisak.
Here.
And trustee Bettzinger.
All right, we do have a quorum this evening. I would ask that if you're not speaking, if you can turn your microphone off just to avoid some feedback. So as everybody in the room is well aware, due to the COVID pandemic, the governor has allowed us to host meetings such as this that are, this one's quasi on Zoom. We do have trustee Spurling added to the meeting remotely and potentially trustee Lee as well. So all right, with that, I'll move on to the public participation. This is the public comment period for any member of the public. Has anybody submitted an email or called you with a comment? Okay, is there anybody in the audience that has public comment at this time? That's not on the agenda, I know you're on the agenda later. Okay, hearing none, I'll move on to the consent agenda. I'll read the items, entertain a motion for approval. Minutes of the village board meeting of June twenty second, building report for June of 2020, accounts payable through July ninth of 2020, and cancellation of the July twenty first committee of the whole meeting. So moved.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bettzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
And trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and that carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving on, the items for consent, we have item A is the 2020 pavement management study report. Would like to invite engineer Wallers for any update that he might have.
Thank you, mayor. The final report was submitted and we made one change to that report. We had an oversight on a section of railroad street that we wanted to add back into the program. So that would show up on appendix E, table seven. So we added roughly seven hundred and thirty feet of roadway. Now that is a industrial area, so the cost to do repair in that area is more significant than the other portion of railroad. You may note that. We do think that we'll have funding that'll carry over from our 2020 program that will approximate that number. So we have estimating about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in savings from the 2020 awarded value. And we propose to carry that over. So we haven't made any deletions to the budget. We just added that street and revised the cost accordingly. So that's the only change that's been made. I haven't gotten any questions, but I'd be happy to take any right now if there's any questions. If not, we would be asking for approval of the final plan at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Pete? I just had one. When we approve this tonight, when will we, will you start designing next year's program then?
As soon as practical. We'll bring a PSA back to you for consideration at the next meeting. And then we'll start immediately after that because we want to get a jump on the top graphic surveys.
Okay. Sounds good. Take a motion to approve?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
One question. Sorry, just out of it. With the upcoming plan, any impact on the, governor recently executed the Illinois Workers' Right to Public Works Act, which states that basically ninety cent of percent of anybody working on a municipal project or state-funded project, federal project, has to be an Illinois resident? Is that, any adjustment, any issue, any concern?
It's not a concern. We'll certainly modify our contract documents to make that a requirement. I would say honestly that most of the folks that have been working in the village have been residents of Illinois already. So I don't expect that that's going to be a challenge for the road contractors, but we'll certainly probably have to monitor it, which is something we haven't done in the past.
Thank you.
Be interesting if you were like a border community up near Wisconsin or Indiana and you bid things out annually, that'd be kind of strange.
Yeah, just one thing I will mention, we do have some of the more cutting-edge pavement rejuvenation and pavement preservation contractors. Sometimes we have, we do try to get multiple bids and sometimes we're getting contractors from Wisconsin bidding. So we'll take a closer look at that. But the ones that we've used in the past that were, are generally based in Illinois, so I don't see that as a problem, but it's again, it's something to be aware of.
Yeah. Okay. All right, call the roll.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bettzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Thank you. And trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
All right, and that carries unanimously. Thank you. It'll be five zero. All right, item B this evening for separate action is the waiver of bid and purchase of a GMC medium-duty truck for Public Works. Director Wolf?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Village of Montgomery Public Works Department has three vehicles outlined in the current budget year for purchase. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, vehicle purchases were suspended until the effects of the pandemic were better understood. However, at this time, I'd like to request the purchase of one of the three vehicles due to need of public works staff and availability of that vehicle at this time. Currently, public work staff is utilizing all available medium-duty trucks, but is still not have enough for the personnel that we have at this time. We currently have four seasonal employees working for Public Works that require two medium-duty trucks every day to be used by those staff members. I understand that these staff members are temporary, but Public Works is also waiting to hire two additional maintenance workers for the street division. So which, in contrast, we have a short-term and also long-term need for this replacement vehicle. Public Works will be retaining the vehicle that we're replacing for a short period of time to help with the additional staff that we have during the season. And then that vehicle will be auctioned off as those employees are no longer needed. And the board has declared that vehicle surplus equipment. We will continue to hold on the purchase of the other two trucks that are budgeted for this year at this time. But at this point in time, rather, we would like to move forward with the purchase of a 2020 GMC Sierra 2500 from Kaufman Truck Sales in Montgomery. The village has purchased vehicles from Kaufman Truck Sales in the past. Kaufman's offers the village competitive pricing and is the only new vehicle dealership within the village. This truck will be purchased with a nine-foot snowplow, which will use for winter operations, and is also going to be outfitted with a fiberglass utility cap, which will be furnished and installed by Monroe Truck Equipment. The cost of the vehicle with the snowplow included from Kaufman Truck Sales is forty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars. And the cost of the fiberglass utility cap from Monroe Truck is eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars in total. The total vehicle with the outfit cost is under the amount budgeted in the current budget year. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to take those at this time. Otherwise, I'm requesting approval for purchase of this vehicle.
I have a question, if I may. Once this is purchased, what is the projected timeframe as to when it can actually be put into service?
So this vehicle, a large part of the reason why I came to the board tonight is because this vehicle is on the ground at Kaufman's currently. One of the big struggles that we've been looking at, because we're wanting to monitor availability on these vehicles. So when we do hopefully hit that point where we can release and start buying trucks, we're able to do that. But what we figured out is that production dates have been pushed so far back. Not only GMC, Chevy, Ford, all makes and models alike are having these issues. So the projected build date for next year's 2021 models from GMC, production isn't going to ramp up until September twenty-first. So to answer your question, essentially, as soon as we cut the check, the truck's on the ground. There is a little bit of work that will have to be done. Snowplow will have to be installed, but those are all things that we can do. So that's one of the big reasons that we came to the board tonight is because the truck is available immediately for our use.
Thank you.
I have a question for Director Wolf. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Mark, the equipment that has to be installed on it, I did look through the proposals you sent us. Where is that going to take place? Is that someplace locally? Is that at Kaufman's by any chance?
So Monroe Truck Equipment is located in Joliet. Their company is based out of, their primary headquarters is out of a different state. But we have all of our work done out of their Joliet branch, so that's where that work will take place. There is roughly about a forty-day lead time is what they're giving us. They're suggesting that it could be substantially less, but that's what they gave us as a lead time before that cap's available. Installation looks to be about a week once the cap is received.
Okay, thank you.
I thought you just ended the meeting. Any other comments for Director Wolf on that purchase? I know you sent us some additional information as well. Did you want to cover that?
That was just the documentation for the cost of the vehicle and the other big costs.
Gotcha. Okay. All right, is there a motion? Motion to approve?
Second.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bettzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
And trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
That carries five zero. Thank you, Mark. All right, item C, we have waiver of bid and award of a contract for street striping. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Village of Montgomery has performed street striping as a maintenance item for many years. Preform Traffic Control Systems is a reputable contractor that has performed this contract work for the village as well for many years. Preform offers the Village of Montgomery the same pricing as they do for King County Transportation Division, which is a cost savings to the village because we do not have the same amount of linear footage, of course, that King County has. So it poses as a definite advantage for the village. Like in many cases, there's more quantity involved in that, so that's a reason. Preform does an excellent job of not only the application and work with traffic control and scheduling. In years past, work has been scheduled and completed before the annual Montgomery Fest. This year, obviously, that's not a prevalent issue, but it always just goes to show that the contractor's always been very aware of that in the past and willing to work with us to accommodate that. This contract is for a not-to-exceed amount of twenty-seven thousand dollars. However, the village used that same amount in our contract last year, but only expended twenty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty-five cents, which is a correction from the information in your packet, so I apologize for that. With the increased amount of road resurfacing in our IRP program, we're starting to see a decrease in the amount of money that we're expending for this maintenance item due to newer thermoplasters that are being used and different materials. So it's, we're starting to see this number come down. So we're hoping that after this year, we can reevaluate the total budget needed and be able to adjust that down to where we think it'll stay with the paving project that has been taking place for the last few years. The staff has continued to work on this and therefore, we're just asking for the approval tonight for the contractor of Preform Traffic Control Systems for a do-not-exceed amount of twenty-seven thousand dollars for the street striping contract. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those at this time.
I don't have a question, but I've got a comment, and I said it before, I'm going to say it again. I think that the crosswalks along Concord and around Lakewood Creek Elementary School need to be better identified with striping. And as you go along Concord and you come up to Lakewood Creek and you continue west on Concord, there are four crosswalks through there. Only one of them is identified with a fluorescent crosswalk sign. And just the other day, it's like, okay, are we putting more priority on the one with the fluorescent sign? As, if you're crossing as a kid and stuff, which one should you go to? I understand that just because you're in a marked crosswalk doesn't mean, you still got to be safe and look both ways and all those sorts of things. But I've heard from residents that as kids come to school, they use those crosswalks. And only one of them, and the one that's got the sign is still, in my opinion, poorly identified. I think we need to do a better job, and I think we need to do, come up with some sort of crosswalk, cross-section that fits those areas better.
Definitely noted. We'll work with engineer Wallers as well as his staff to try to identify those areas and see what we can do better to indicate those crossings.
Thank you.
One question, Director Wolf. This is the second item tonight that we're asking for waiver of bids. What, when is the last time we bid this kind of work in the village?
That I don't know. I can tell you that in my experience with Preform, we've had very positive outcome with them. Again, this is one of those where my personal experience, their, their knowledge of our town and the areas that they do outweighs anyone that's going to come in just because of the duration of that. Again, I like to take into account the fact that they're continually getting the awarded bid for King County, which to me shows that their pricing is competitive with other contractors. So it's something that we can definitely take a look at. It's one of those where we just have to weigh in the factor of how much staff time is going to be involved in monitoring a new contractor that comes in as far as overseeing the project where we've got a contractor who's very familiar with the area. And again, we, in my time here, have never received any complaints during the duration of when they're performing the work. So those are things that we take into consideration, but if it's direction of the board that, you know, we'd like to go and look at an RFP, that's something that we can definitely do.
The last few years, we participated in King County's program. It used to be they would bid it out.
Sure.
It could open other communities. Now it's just gone to where Preform is just saying, we'll honor that price for you guys. But that's what we're going with as the King County has bid it out, we're going by, you know, by their bidding space.
Well, and their letter doesn't act, doesn't exactly say they bid it out. They said they were awarded the contract. I think I'm very comfortable piggybacking on their bid or like when we piggyback off the state bid because it's something that's been competitively bid. That's fine. It would just be good to know that, that information. And then on the flip side, on the first one, you know, buying a truck from, from the only truck, you know, seller in town is a, is a solid move so long as we're backing it up and making sure that we're cross-checking that with somebody else that doesn't, that's not in town. So it's a point well taken, for sure.
Yeah, I don't have an objection with tonight, especially with your recommendation, the previous work in the village. It's just, I want to make sure as a community, we are cautious of getting into that, ah, we don't need to bid that one out because we know it.
Agreed.
Vendors get comfortable with communities, there's, there's just some things, so.
Yep, absolutely.
Just a thought.
And the, I know the, I know we're approving a contract. We don't have a contract in here. We do have a letter from them. And it says that the, they're going to honor the prices for all King County townships, municipalities, and that. That includes our Kenda County portion of Montgomery as well?
Correct, they honor that as well.
All right. All right, any other questions or comments for Director Wolf? Is there a motion? So moved.
Second.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
And trustee Bettzinger.
Yes.
All right, and that carries. Thank you. Moving on, item D this evening is PSA with EEI for design and construction engineering for the Wobonzie Creek Shared Use Path. Director Wolf?
Thank you, Mr. President. Village of Montgomery's staff has been working for the past few years to identify areas throughout the village where sidewalks and bike paths can be incorporated to connect existing area, existing areas and existing paths to new areas or incompleted connection points that were left as a result of the construction slowdown in 2008. The PSA requested tonight for permitting, design, and construction of the Wobonzie Creek Shared Use Path has been selected to be completed and connect the Gilman Trail to the Oswego Library District Montgomery Campus Facility. The path will be connected to the existing sidewalk also that is installed, was installed, sorry, when IDOT completed the reconstruction and widening of Route 30. This will serve pedestrians and bicyclists with the availability to use these paths for safe access to the library and several businesses, both in the Ogden Hill Shopping Center and also providing safe travel to the Douglas Road corridor. Our board may recall that the village staff also applied for a grant from Kendall County in December of last year. The village was awarded that grant for seventy-five thousand dollars for the completion of this path. Included in your packets, you'll see that EEI along with village staff has identified two potential routes of the new path that will be constructed. Also outlined is the estimated costs for the scope of this project as it relates to the PSA along with the anticipated project schedule. Pending approval of the PSA, EEI will begin on design, engineering, and permitting. Bidding for the project is scheduled to take place in mid-August, and construction would then be scheduled to begin sometime around the beginning of October. EEI will be onsite during the duration of the project, performing construction oversight. Staff is recommending the approval of the PSA between the Village of Montgomery and EEI for the estimated amount of sixty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer those at this time.
Thanks. Questions? We had the funding for the path budgeted for this fiscal year for the construction?
Correct, and the project will actually carry over a little bit into next year, mostly due to the rehabilitation of landscaping and such.
Gotcha, but next calendar year, we'll finish it before the end of the fiscal year likely.
It could carry over, yes, more than likely.
It seems like, Mayor, just because our fiscal year, first of May, typically, you know, the grant system doesn't get established until, honestly, until late May or June.
Okay. That's awesome.
I haven't seen it myself, but I hear that the residents of Fairfield-Foxmore are excited about the path that's going in from whatever road that is in Fairfield-Foxmore over to the park, so thank you.
Yeah, I was going to ask about that. I took a run through there the other day, and I could see they were cutting in the path, and I didn't want to run on the path, but how's, we have everything squared away with comment at this point or not?
We're still waiting for a final approval. We've submitted all the documentation that's been requested, and we're now working, I think, with their real estate division to finalize the lease agreement. So it should be shortly, we believe.
So we have approval from, from fifty-six departments. We need one more.
Yeah, that's, that's been typical, so, okay. All right, well, thank you. Appreciate it. Any other comments on the PSA? Is there a motion? So moved.
Second.
Trustee Bettzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
And trustee Marisak.
Yes.
That carries five zero. Thank you. All right, item E this evening is Resolution 2020 dash zero one five, authorizing a stationary food vendor license. Director Young? It's a good mask.
What's that?
That's all right. Go ahead.
There's actually two stationary vendor licenses. One is for Primos Tacos. They will be moving from their current location on Montgomery Road to a location at fourteen sixty to fourteen ninety Douglas Road. This is the location where we used to have a barbecue food vendor. They vacated that site, and now this will replace them at that location. And the second would be Taco Grill and Salsa Bar. This is at the location that's in the Ogden Hill Shopping Center that's been there for a couple of years now. So this is a renewal of both of these licenses, but a location change for one of them. And so staff would recommend approval.
Okay, so the, the one on Douglas Road is, is a new location for this vendor.
Correct.
And there was one there previously that's gone.
Correct.
And then also in this approval is the one out by Menards?
That's correct. It's a yearly renewal of the.
I got you. Okay.
Temporary vendor license.
Is there a fee for these that we charge?
I believe that it's a hundred dollar fee.
Okay. All right. Any questions?
My only concern with the Primos move is that they're moving directly across from La Chiquita, which is kind of a competing, I know there was a vendor there before that was barbecue. This is a direct competition to a brick-and-mortar property tax-paying company. So it's just one of my, that's my concern.
Point taken. Any other comments? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
No discussion? Any discussion? Call the roll.
Trustee Bettzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
And trustee Marisak.
Yes.
And that carries five zero. Thank you. Thank you. All right, moving on to item F this evening, we have Resolution 2020 dash zero one eight, ratifying executive order 2020 dash zero three. You want to give a summary, Jeff?
Executive Order Two, which Matt approved and you guys ratified in the meeting, is the one that set up the program for a hundred dollars of verbal assistance, as well as the fact that we weren't charging late fees or the online payment fee. At this point, staff, we can go back to charging those fees, the late fee and the online payment fee. So we spoke with Doris, see how we needed to do that. She said that Matt should issue another executive order rescinding those, and then have you guys ratify by resolution. Will she prepare an executive order for Matt? We're going to get him on Friday, so I'm glad to ratify that.
Cool. Comments? So moved.
Second. Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bettzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
And Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Alright, that carries 5-0, thank you, thanks Jeff and Laura. Item G this evening is Ordinance 1881, amending the village code, this is chapter 12, offenses miscellaneous, first reading tonight, so we're not voting. Who wants this?
Alright. We received some complaints about kids swimming in some of the potential basins coming up with them. The school was Laura, as far as what we can do as our enforcement, she said we currently really don't have the ability to afford that unless we adopt an ordinance. The ordinance allows us to post signage, prohibit any of our activities we want to prohibit. So we're coming to you tonight to see are there activities you want to prohibit? And if so, we're going to, then we will sign it following the prohibit.
I have some questions, if I may, before I walked in here, a resident reached out to me yesterday, I was on the phone with that person before I walked in here. And she's a resident of Lakewood Creek West. Lakewood Creek West is a subdivision in which the detention basins and the pond are privately, they're, they're through the HOA. So HOA and the residents there pay to maintain those. There, there are concerns with residents, or maybe they aren't residents, but people who don't live there. They have posted signs that say no trespassing, no swimming, no whatever in that area. And so, there was a gentleman who went down, I guess he was fishing along the stream bank at that location yesterday and she said, sir, did you see the signs? It's no trespassing. What sort of police enforcement can we do? There was an officer that was called and he said that he couldn't do a whole lot. But if it's private property, if it's private Lakewood Creek HOA property and they have signs that are posted, no trespassing, no swimming, no fishing, and that's what he was doing, why couldn't that gentleman be trespass warned?
Well, I'm not sure of the circumstances surrounding that, Trustee Youngerman, I tell you that you're exactly correct. Alls we have to do is tell him it's trespassing, warn it is trespassing, if it doesn't leave, then we can arrest him for trespassing. I'm not sure of the conversation report, the first I'm hearing about it, but I'll look into it and find out why that was.
Yeah, and I, I kind of knew this was on the agenda and the, I, it was just luck that I talked to her today.
I wonder if it's possible, the thought was that it was village-owned property, because I, that's probably more of an anomaly than the rest of our basins that were turned over. I know our basins and my subdivision, our subdivision, were turned over to the village. We pay to maintain them, but the village couldn't then, or the HOA wouldn't have the right to restrict people. Yeah.
Now, just to clarify, you said Lakewood Creek West, which is different than Lakewood.
Lakewood Creek West is private, what are, I guess, Attorney Julian, what are the, the differences in, in private enforcement as opposed to village-owned public enforcement?
It's probably gonna, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. It's probably gonna depend a lot on the specific HOA and what their covenants are as well. You know, private, you always have the option of a trespass and that's what you're limited to right now without any other ordinance on the books, which is why we suggested also adding something that would be more or less disregarding a sign, you know, and the instructions on the sign. And we left it open in the ordinance so that you could tailor each basin specifically to meet what those HOAs need or if it's, you know, village-owned or privately owned and kind of what each particular basin's restrictions should be. So you don't want to necessarily create a general rule, which would make sense for one area and not for another. So this is to provide a little more flexibility, because yeah, right now with a private basin, if you have residents not there, you can always go after trespassing, but you know, the difficulty is always with the enforcement mechanism and are you able to prove a trespass? Is there, you know, enough enforcement opportunity and resources to pursue that? So this is just to kind of add on to what we can do with the private and then village-owned, you do have a little bit more discretion and authority because it is your property.
So the way this is drafted, I'm just noticing this at the end, it says with all this, you know, you shall not bathe, all that, within areas posted against such use. So we could, as the village then decide, the basin that we got a complaint for people swimming in, which I think we all agree, we probably don't want people swimming in these basins, they're not designed for that, we could then post a sign at that basin. Because what I, I, I don't think we have funds for it, I'm sure we don't want to go ahead and add signage to every basin that we own unless there's some sort of an issue. Is that accurate, probably? But we could then say, no, no bathing or swimming in this basin and like the basin in Seandridge that I believe the Park District allows, like kayaking on, or at least.
They allow kayaking depending on.
Right. So we don't want to, I don't want to get in the way of that, so.
Yeah, that's.
How do we do that?
Yeah, so you would be able to post the sign at this particular basin that restricts whatever activities that you wanted and then the ordinance violation would be that you violated the sign that was posted at that basin, whatever those activities listed were. So you know, one, it might be just swimming, another, it could be some different activity depending on what, you know, the HOA either permits or doesn't permit or what the village believes would be appropriate in the basin.
As, as a resident of Montgomery and in a public basin, say Doug wants to go fishing at one of the basins that's not in his subdivision. It doesn't matter as long as he's a resident of Montgomery, correct? He can go to whatever public basin he wants?
He doesn't have to be a resident of Montgomery.
Doesn't have to, it's public, just.
It's public.
Okay.
And that's private, then there would be no restriction.
Okay. So, looking at this the other way, does this mean that all of this stuff is perfectly legal in every basin unless we post a sign?
Right now, I mean, I think it would depend on other authorities as well, like if there's IDNR jurisdiction, then you'd have to follow IDNR regulations as well. But you know, when I'm looking at the ordinance and we're saying swimming's not allowed, I can't find where swimming's not allowed. So you know, this then allows us to prohibit swimming, or you could do the opposite where swimming's prohibited unless there's a sign that expressly says swimming's allowed. Depending, again, I don't know what your, you know, want to visit each basin specifically or if there's a general rule one way or the other. But yeah, as of right now, I just don't see what would necessarily prohibit swimming because there's nothing on the books and there's no sign posted.
I would feel.
Go ahead.
Maybe you're gonna say the same thing. I would feel a little bit more comfortable if this was drafted to say specifically that nobody can swim in these basins, all of them. Like, whether or not we post a sign, I mean, we could post signs, because I think that's the issue. I would hate for somebody to come back to us and say, now that you passed this, like any HOA, hey, we want you to post a sign that says no fishing. Because to me that, that doesn't seem appropriate, I mean, people fish in these basins, a lot of them, all the time. And I don't want to get into where we're regulating that based on leverage from one HOA to another.
Well, I think we specifically talked about that, probably, what, three or four years ago? When Stan was on the board about being able to, to utilize that resource because there were certain basins that had fish in them and some of them were overstocked. I guess the other concern is, the village pays a lot of money for these native areas and for ingress and egress, how are people getting down there? Can they have, can we have them follow a certain path to like a designated fishing area? That way they're not destroying the native area just by walking through?
And to build on what Steve's saying, that's exactly the comment I was going to make. I thought the purpose of going with naturalized basins, we don't want to have all that work disturbed and if you have somebody walking through it, they could potentially be bringing in invasive species and really destroying that ecosystem. So I, I think that there needs to be something in place that kind of gets that point across that we don't really want people to come through and destroy all the work that's been done to get these to a naturalized point where we can have some naturalized drainage and have some natural areas.
I have an idea. I know a guy who happens to be a naturalist who might be willing to come and share some actual information and maybe working with, with Director Young. We can get a little more information on those retention, detention, what they are, the, the value of that natural resource, the recreational opportunities it's used by. So that we're not guessing what some things could be or should be or can be. We, we have experts in our community who, who can come and talk to us about those types of things and, and maybe give some recommendations on how to best do it. Blanket, not even blanket, but our, almost seemingly arbitrary rules based on this neighborhood or this HOA or this, this area. For us, quite frankly, we don't have the information we need to, to make, I think, accurate and informed decisions on what to prohibit or allow. So it'd be nice if we could take some time and workshop it, set up a cow or, or whatever and just get some information before we start slapping rules on some natural areas and we don't have the expertise on, on that.
Sure. And I, and I, I'm not actually even proposing that we put any restrictions other than swimming on our basins because a lot of these basins have been up for 15 years now and you know, the basin behind my house, some people fish in there, some people don't. There's been really no complaints about it. I don't think, I don't even want it to be up for discussion tonight that we're considering banning fishing from our basins, although maybe the news article might say that. But the, but to approve an ordinance, this is first reading anyway, that says you can't bathe or swim in, in the basins, I think is appropriate, they weren't designed for that. Nobody's asking us to ban or regulate anything else at this point. And I certainly don't want to hodgepodge, I know how much fun that is with fences and this kind of stuff. I don't want an opportunity for us to pick and choose exactly who gets to do what arbitrarily. Now, if it was based on the design of the basin, like this basin, you can do this. But I know people that have walked through some of the native areas and I don't, I'm, I'm sure you're not, you know, killing things off and we do have some outcroppings on some of them, but it seems relatively benign and in a year when there's not a whole lot of things that you can do or vacations you can take, there's plenty of people fishing in our basins or in the creeks. I think that's good for the community, so.
And then the ones that are privately owned?
We can still.
We have no control over that.
Yeah, we could still regulate it, right?
To some extent, yeah. And it depends again on what your, I don't know, the specific case by case with each HOA and whether, you know, what the nature of your agreement with them is with regard to the maintenance. But to the extent that you maintain it, you certainly can put some sort of restriction in or some agreement with the HOA.
But we don't maintain that one.
Yeah, we don't, Lakewood Creek.
They pay, they pay to maintain the Lakewood Creek basin, the HOA pays privately and it happens to be PISO that maintains that one as well.
And in cases like that, you'd probably want something more along the lines of what we do for private parking areas, which is like the private parking enforcement agreement, which, you know, they agree with us that they want to regulate that as well. So you can't unilaterally necessarily enforce something in every basin if you have no other crops, but you certainly can work out agreements.
I'm in favor of the no swimming. And again, beyond that, if, if Lakewood Creek West or Lakewood Creek doesn't want fishing, they can post that, because it's theirs and they own it. And I'm cer- certain they would be happy to agree that we can enforce the no swimming on their basins, I'm sure that they would be okay with that. Hmm? I, I'm sure that they would.
This is first reading, so we're just chatting about this tonight. I think it would be helpful if we had PISO and the naturalists, if they're willing, just some information about fishing in our basins and, and what we should or shouldn't be doing. Because I think, like I said, there's a lot of people using them this year, it would be good to revisit that.
Yeah, and I don't recall the details, but I know that that's where IDNR was more involved, was with the fishing question, not the swimming question. So I, again, we'd want to revisit what we had circulated in the past and probably use that as a starting point for discussions also.
Okay. Let's add this to the, if we can, the next meeting, otherwise a future meeting. Okay. Alright, thank you. Moving on to item H, we have Resolution 2020-016 authorizing a forgivable loan for F and C Industries, Director Young?
Thank you, Mr. President, yes. This item was reviewed by the Montgomery Development Fund Loan Committee last week, recommended for approval. It is for a forgivable loan to cover a portion of the cost to re-roof this structure that's on Pearl Street. The total cost of the re-roof is approximately $20,000 and this forgivable loan would cover half of that cost. The committee recommended approval of the loan.
Alright. Is the work taking place yet or they will?
No, it isn't.
Okay. Alright, any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Alright, any discussion? Call the roll.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
And Trustee Betzinger?
That carries, thank you. Item I tonight is Resolution 2020-017 authorizing a forgivable loan to Atrevate Confections?
Yes, thank you, this is for, also a forgivable loan for $10,000 to cover part of the cost of the addition of a outdoor, small outdoor patio cafe area on the, which would be located on the south side of their building. They also wish to improve a portion of the facade where they have some wood shakes that are in bad shape and need to be replaced as well as add some equipment to deal with their expanded services. So, this was also reviewed by the Montgomery Development Fund Loan Committee last week and recommended for approval.
Perfect. Any questions? I had one. They don't own the building, right?
They do not own the building, they have to have the authorization from the building owner to go forward with these improvements. So that will be secured prior to the loan being granted.
So, and I'm 100%, I'm a million percent in favor of this, for sure. But if something happened to the company and they closed, because that's kind of a condition of the forgivable loan.
It is.
Can we then go after the building owner or no?
Well, we could go after, my understanding is we could go after either one, either the building owner or the business owner. Sorry.
Yeah. Well, and yeah, and if it's just, if, if the restaurant owner is the only one that's responsible, then that's fine too, it's just, I was just trying to clarify.
The past, we had this situation where business went out of business in a building that they were leasing and we went after the business owner.
Right.
To try to recover the funds.
Okay, because that's how it's set up, that's fine.
I have a question. In that instance, are, do we have an obligation as a village to inform that business owner that, that less he is than putting them in that potentially precarious position?
No, we wouldn't after.
That just seems odd.
We would go after the restaurant, not the property.
Okay, that, okay. Yeah, we don't. Yeah, that seems. Sorry, I confused things by saying that we could go after either one, but it's just the business owner. Thank you.
And at the bottom, you know, big picture, somebody's investing in a building, whatever happens to the restaurant, you know, hopefully nothing happens to it. The building has been improved and the, the money will have been worth, worth the spend. Alright. Any other comments or questions?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Go ahead, Penny.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Did you call me?
Yes, Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
And Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Alright, that carries 5-0, thank you.
Thank you.
We don't have any items for discussion, we don't have anything newer unfinished, anybody have any comments or questions? Dan?
I have something. I just want to say, I don't know how many people are aware of this, but this is the last board meeting that Tyler Bachman from SPY will be attending because he's going through a career change. So I just wanted to thank him for always being here and reporting on what we're doing here at the Village of Montgomery and good luck.
I saw that today, sir, congratulations.
Congratulations, Tyler.
Congrats, thanks.
Thank you for all the support.
First time he shows up in four months and now he's leaving, so.
I have one thing, there was an online article, and I'm not sure if it'll make the paper this week or not, but regarding the $7.4 million in PPP loans that were received in Village Montgomery for small businesses. And I just appreciate staff's help, I know Shar was instrumental with the MEDC and working with some of the local banks and with staff to get. and with staff to get some of that stuff done, and I think it made a big difference to a lot of the businesses here. So it was really nice to see that partnership work and continue to grow. So thank you to staff and thank you to Shar for getting that taken care of.
Anything else? So I will, before we end this meeting, it is very nice to finally see everybody's faces after many long months of trying to do Zoom meetings. I know that they're helpful, but they're not perfect. But I do appreciate seeing everybody here. Things are going to be just a little bit wonky, I'm sure, over the next few months as we sort of get back to in-person meetings, but also still have Zoom meetings, so just, I think, bear with us and with staff on, on that project. And the reason why I said that is, the next three meetings on our future meetings have been canceled, and so we will have our village board meeting on Monday, the 27th, at 7:00 PM. Steve, did you have something?
No.
Okay. No executive session, is there an, sorry, is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes, sec, so moved.
Second.
I haven't done it for so long, I'm confused.
Steve's been drinking the hand sanitizer throughout this meeting, I just want to let everyone know.
This is a little low.
She thought it was aftershave.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
And trustee Spurling? She's gone.
She's gone.
Uh-oh. Okay.
Absolutely.
All right. And we're adjourned, thank you.